Good evening and welcome to the June 14, 2022 meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. My name is interim superintendent Kathleen Smith, and I would like to call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting in person at Dover Sherburne Middle School this evening, and we are also live streaming with DSC TV for those who want to view remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and I would like to thank Sherburne School Committee members for coming here as right after this meeting, we do have our joint school committee meetings this evening, and that allowed us to be able to have both at the middle school. And I first of all, want to welcome our two new school committee members, Kristin Aberley and Christine Walsh, who were elected by our Sherburne voters in May of 2022 and will take on this role finishing out this year and obviously starting with the 2223 school year. I will have to tell you that both superintendent-elect Beth McCoy and myself have already had an opportunity to have a Zoom meeting and talk about the role of school committee, really some of the expectations, to talk about some of the protocols and processes. And also, we had a training. I know you were able to attend that meeting, and I thank you, so it's kind of been baptism by fire, but this is your first official Sherburne School Committee meeting. I'd like to welcome you and have you introduce yourselves.
Thank you so much. Delighted to be here, and thank you to everyone. I'm Christine Walsh, and I have a third grader and I have a kindergartner, and we've been in Sherburne for four years, and it's just been one of the best times of my life, my family's life, and I am so excited to serve the community in this capacity.
Thank you. Excellent.
Hi, I'm Kristin Aberley. I've lived in Sherburne since 2016, which I think is, what is that, eight years? I have three daughters, two are currently in Pine Hill, a fourth grader and a second grader, and I have an incoming kindergartner. Thank you so much for welcoming me here.
Very good. Congratulations again. So as is our protocol for the first meeting, we're sitting a new school board, we are going to be taking nominations for both chair and secretary. So I'm going to open it up, and I also want to say that I believe we have members Dennis Quant and Gita Rousseau on Zoom that is allowed again under our legislative agreement during this time, so they will also be joining this evening. So I'm going to open it up to nominations for chair of the Sherburne School Committee. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Amanda Brown.
I second the nomination.
Thank you. So nominated by Dennis Quant is Amanda Brown, seconded by Gita Rousseau. Do I have any other nominations? Okay, I'd like to close nominations, and we will take a vote. All those in favor of electing Amanda Brown as your chair, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Dennis Quant, aye.
Aye, yes, me too.
And congratulations to Amanda Brown. We're so pleased to have you onboard as chair. And Madam Chair, I will now hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. And so I will ask for any nominations for secretary? And I am going to make a nomination. I'm going to nominate Dennis Quant for secretary.
Gita Rousseau, seconded nomination.
Excellent. All right, so any discussion? All right, I will close the nominations and call for a vote, so all in favor of Dennis Quant taking on the role of secretary?
Aye.
Gita Rousseau, aye.
Kristin Aberley, aye.
Amanda Brown, aye. Dennis.
Okay, thank you so much, Dennis. And now we will move on to community comments. So next on our agenda is community comments. We have a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it's not possible or prefer to attend this meeting in person this evening. Before I read the preamble, is there anyone who would like to make a community comment this evening? Please let us know. Would you like to do something? Yes, okay, all right. So please remember, we're in kind of this hybrid format, so thank you for your patience as we try to figure this out. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. So would you like to go ahead? Yeah, just if you could just say your name and your town.
My name is Colleen Hadfield, and I live in Sherburne. I have a kindergartner, a third grader, an eighth grader, and a ninth grader. So thank you for allowing me comments this evening, I appreciate it. I actually would like to piggyback on an email that I had sent to the school committee and to the future superintendent regarding class sizes for the upcoming kindergartners. The numbers are quite high, and I believe it's still in discussion, nothing has been decided yet, but on behalf of some concerned kindergarten families, we would just like some more information or dialogue as to where this position stands in terms of hiring a future first grade teacher. It's important that, you know, that teachers and administration have the time to prep for what could be another individual coming into the school. So as, just as a concerned parent, we just kind of would like to know where we stand. I know that you can't answer questions, so this is just kind of a comment from me saying it's a concern for myself and on behalf of some families that also have children that are entering first grade.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any other community comments online? Is there anybody online who'd like to make a community comment? Yes, we have. Okay, go ahead, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Karen McDermott. I'm sorry, I'm Karen McDermott, and I was just following through with Colleen Hadfield as well as another concerned parent about the class sizes for the upcoming first grade class, so I'll pull back, but there are several of us that are concerned about this topic as well.
Thank you. Looks like we have one more? Okay, yes. Go ahead, you're raising your hand.
Hi, yes, so I am also the parent of another K student going into first grade. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit, but I just wanted to reiterate what, you know, mostly you should say. I also feel that it's very important that this be considered, so I just wanted to back up what they also said. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any other community comment? All right, thank you, and I think we're going to hear a little bit about enrollment updates later on, so hopefully that will be helpful. All right, so if there are no further comments, we'll close community comment and move on to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. I'll hand it over to Superintendent Smith.
So thank you, Madam Chair. Again, you know, we do not necessarily respond at the meeting to community comment, but I'm going to ask for permission to, you know, address the issue that was just brought up. As, you know, Colleen Hadfield had sent, as she said, an email, we were certainly aware of that, so let me address a little bit of the process.
Yes, please, thank you.
I was so pleased to come to this community and to actually see guidelines, which have been formed at both Chicaring and Pine Hill as to what an appropriate class size is for a teacher, let alone, as Colleen mentioned, a first grade coming in, learning so many of those developmental skills, beginning to read. So one of the things, and I have to share an experience coming in last year on July 1st as the interim. Very quickly, as the new year was unfolding, it was brought to my attention, and it was the Chicaring School, that there were two additional staff members that were warranted by looking at their guidelines and not only some members, students that had been registered. And we addressed that, I don't know the exact date, but we addressed it very quickly, for really the reasons that you're talking about. If you're going to add an additional teacher to grade one or whatever grade level, you want Dr. Brown to have the opportunity to have the best candidates possible, you know, to be able to obviously go through that interviewing process, to bring the person onboard and get them set as they prepare, you know, for the opening of school, different than teachers that have been part of the school, part of the process. So I do want to assure you that we are looking right now at, I believe, I had a conversation with Dr. Brown today, just to make sure we had the correct numbers, that presently we are at 67. And in looking at our class sizes, we had, and that was 66 current kindergartners, I believe two at this point have been registered and one has left. So you have again, kids coming in, kids going out, and this process, again, you know, we kind of guesstimate, we look at the trends over the past few years as to what you see at different grade levels for kids coming in. So we're well aware that this is something that we will look at very carefully, we're not going to wait till the very end, but again, I think out of respect for the budgeting process, you know, with the town of Sherburne, they've set these guidelines, which are wonderful, but we are not going to hesitate if we see those numbers, and we're very close. So, you know, I thank you for, you know, sharing, you know, your concerns and to all the parents that shared the concerns, and please be assured that we are looking at that with a very careful eye. Obviously, the superintendent coming onboard will keep you updated through your committee members as to what the process is. So any questions about that?
I have a question, I'm not sure if that's corny or not. If it's not, it's okay.
I don't know.
It's just about budgeting timelines. I just don't know, as a parent, if that can be answered, if it's not, I understand.
So you have to be prepared in a budget, so we have an approved budget, but we do have those guidelines. So when working with our administrative team, you know, if, if again, we need to add a fourth grade, a fifth grade, you know, we're not sure, you've got such a stable community, but again, there is some in-migration, out-migration. So we are prepared for that budget-wise, to, you know, have in the budget the ability to bring a teacher or teachers onboard. So, you know, we assure you that, again, we're prepared for that, we talk about this, you know, we share it openly, you know, during the process, if there are questions with our school committee, also with, you know, your select boards, your, you know, finance boards, so this is discussions that have happened. So if that's your question, you know, that is.
I'll just clarify, so it's not in the budget, what we've been able to do in Pine Hill when these situations have come up post-budget, because our budget was approved in March. We had a revolving fund that allows us some flexibility, and so I think it was five years ago, we added a section in the summertime, and then those numbers maintained, and so we went to do the next year's budget, we incorporated that position into the budget, but that revolving fund allowed us some flexibility to be able to pivot in the summer post-budget.
So there is flexibility there?
There is, yes, we have a revolving fund that we can dip into.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's hard to hear in the room, but you have a question.
Yeah, Dennis, yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
So thank you for that detail, it's super helpful, and kind of drives with kind of how we understood that previously. Kathy, you had sort of talked about the hiring process and thinking about that to the extent that we would need to or not need to increase class sizes, and Harvard obviously would sort of take the lead in thinking about how does that work? If numbers do sort of vacillate doing that, do we have the number of folks within the school right now to be able to support that, or would that be something that we have to hire for externally? And is there any sort of thought on how quickly that could be set up to the extent that's determined that additional classes would be necessary?
So Dennis, what I understood you to say, do we have teachers presently that we can move into that position? Is that what you're asking?
What would be the process to surge if that were necessary? Yes.
We would post the position, recruit candidates, interview and hire, just like we would with any other position. Might there be some internal candidates that apply, such as educational assistance? Perhaps, but we would want to vet a broader pool than just our educational assistance.
Thanks, Sherburne.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you. All right, would you like to continue?
Okay, I will continue. You know, the other evening with our school committees, the one thing I talked about, as we all know, the Uvalde incident in Texas obviously has brought, you know, heightened concern from all of us, you know, watching what unfolded. And the one thing that I'll talk about is, we are very fortunate that although we have spent this year with so many challenges, you know, challenges of making sure we were keeping our kids in school five days a week, you know, dealing with still a raging pandemic at different points during the year, you know, masking, you know, vaccinations, you know, we finally got to a point, and I believe it was after the first of the year, where we talked about what the district had been working on for a number of years, and that was the safety and security of all our schools. We had worked very closely with a partner synergy as a consultant to take us through our drills, make sure our teachers had training, make sure our students had training, so I want to assure everybody that that is a priority. As a matter of fact, I believe this happened right when Sherburne had a drill planned, you know, with their young children that day. So we are again able to, you know, focus on that. You will hear during the joint school committee meeting tonight, a little bit more information about, including our region, about different ways that we are, you know, meeting the needs of security in our district. And one of the things that I want to call out to all parents, you know, we're having a meeting tomorrow evening, and it's a parent forum, and I know it is difficult sometimes, we are going to be having this in person, we're hosting it here at the region in the auditorium, and we're asking you to come as partners, because we need our parents as partners. You know, we recently had some social media threats, and again, we thank goodness had our students and parents that reached out to us after seeing these posts and allowing us to be able to, if need be, involving our law enforcement partners and really kind of get to the bottom. But we have to have parents as partners, also looking at social media that their children are on, sometimes making very poor choices, and again, it is something that takes all of our administration, you know, meetings with our teachers, meeting with our law enforcement, and really taking us away from the very work that all of us, and it's important work, do not get me wrong, but it's important that we all come together and really kind of understand, and I wish I had a blueprint, you know, what we have, our measures of, you know, trying to find out what the threat is, you know, what the level is, what do we have to do to respond, making sure that we're keeping the community updated as best we can with the information that we have and that we're allowed to share as this unfolds. So tomorrow evening, you're going to hear from your school administration about how we're communicating, you're going to hear from law enforcement partners as to how we collaborate and work, we're going to talk about our trainings, we're going to talk about our student handbooks, and very clearly, our discipline codes that have zero tolerance for anything that becomes, you know, threatening, you know, to our school. And truthfully, we'll do what we have to do to make sure our schools are safe. So I invite people to come tomorrow evening, it is at 6:30. We're asking people to actually go to a link that has been provided. If you have questions, we're trying to answer them ahead of time. We've adjusted our agenda to really answer those questions that you have. So that will be the type of format. In talking to superintendent-elect Elizabeth McCoy, I know that this is something that we're going to continue going into next year, making sure that we have trainings for our parents, get them onboard as partners. And that is, that's my update, other than to tell you again that at our joint meeting, we're really pleased with a communications update that we are going to be sharing with all three school committees. We're talking about what we called our central office update, which is really a blueprint for looking at ourselves internally, and as we prepare for going into another budget season, what can we do to strengthen our district and support our teachers and our community. The last day of school is the 22nd, which is fast approaching. I believe it's a week from tomorrow, it is a half-day for all students. I know there, Dr. Brown, I think I'll probably leave it to you, because I know there have been some exciting things happening with your students finishing out the year, so I will stop there.
All right, Dr. Brown, that is an excellent transition to you.
Well, yesterday was an exciting day on Pine Hill. We greeted the caregivers and students who will be coming, be part of our kindergarten cohort next year. So we invited 55 students to come first, we stagger small, smaller group visit sessions with the teachers, so the students can get a positive feel for the school and a gentle, a gentle first visit. Thank you to Christine and other CSA members who helped meet with parents and caregivers. Our CSA does a wonderful job greeting new families. Within a kindergarten class, about 50% of our students, our families, are brand new to Pine Hill, and they have really big eyes and are asking lots and lots of questions, and about 50% of our students are from families that are, have known Pine Hill from older students, and the parents do a great job mentoring and assuring other parents, and I felt yesterday, I could really feel our core values coming through from the teacher perspective as well as, as well as our parent community, it was pretty special. And I'm excited to share that we have, of those 55 students, three students will be joining us through enrollment through the MEKO program, so we're really excited. The MEKO enrollment during COVID was a little bit more challenging. In my school committee report, I wanted to start with a shout-out to our educators who, you know, folks are, folks like, like parents, our teachers are tired, and it's been a long, albeit very rewarding year, and I am really proud to say there's been no teacher pushback with regard to all of the ideas and improvements we're trying to make, as we do every year. Our teachers have been very embracing of all of the goals and areas of improvement we've worked on this year. I think I'm most proud of the gains we've made around social-emotional learning and the nuances, as well as the more formalized structures that we've put in place around curriculum, around assessment, around training teachers, around providing some layers of support to complement teachers, interventionists, and our social-emotional learning coach, to name a few, who are, we're really seeing the importance of the timing of all of those pieces coming together with, with our, you know, our community and the world beyond wrestling with more incidence of mental health and social-emotional needs than ever. So we're, we're very fortunate and grateful to, to be able to grow those structures in our school. As you know, there's a structure in Dover Sherburne through which we can pay our educators to do approved summer curriculum work. I wanted to highlight that our social-emotional learning team is bringing some focused PD to our teachers this summer to take responsive classroom to a deeper and more focused level, and I talked about the Fly5 curriculum and how we'll be unpacking that with teachers, social competency skills, anti-bullying, all of the essential things that we touch upon that we want to make sure are coordinated within grade levels and of course vertically across grade levels, so we're, we're going to give that a close, a close eye and attention this summer. I also wanted to shout out, in excitement, one of the silver linings of our pandemic and some of the additional funding that we've been able to actualize, is summer tutoring for our children through general education. We have an obligation to provide extended school year for children with more, who are more likely to significantly regress due to educational disabilities. The last two summers, we've grown a structure for providing tutoring, what we call our Tier Two interventions, for children across academic, social, emotional, or behavioral areas that are students who need extra interventions in order to make effective progress. So all of those services will be provided at the Chicaring School, where the climate control is really appealing to our grown-ups and our students, and we're really excited. Pine Hill teachers, along with Chicaring teachers, will be providing tutoring specific to student needs. A plethora of end-of-the-year activities is going on around us, and to highlight a few, our students who haven't experienced field day activities for two years are beyond gleeful at the upcoming field day activities for each grade level. Our fifth grade students spend two consecutive days at Hale Reservation, today was the first day. The weather forecast for today and tomorrow is, we have gone in monsoons, we have gone in heatwaves, we have gone in droughts, and this year, I think we're hitting it just right. Our students do ponding and foresting and map orienteering, and they learn shipwreck survival skills, and they, all, as well as high ropes and low ropes challenge courses. So it's, it's exhausting and exhilarating, and they love that. We will be celebrating our fifth graders later this week with families and many activities on campus. I know our families don't want to hear this, but I always say, it is not a graduation, we're keeping this in proportionate scale. The dress code is shorts and t-shirts, not prom gowns, but we're really excited to have our families on campus to, to celebrate our fifth graders and, but preschool through fifth grade, there's lots of, lots of culminating events and cool treats. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the committee for either Superintendent Smith or Dr. Brown?
I would just ask, Dr. Brown, as someone who has seen it all, as a career educator, can you comment on the socio-emotional impact environment right now as it applies to learning? Can you maybe in your own words just share when a child is, is facing some of the anxieties or social connection difficulties that I think we're seeing right now? How does that impact learning?
It, it certainly impacts the child's ability to be present for learning. When we are anxious, we're not present, and the more anxious we are, the less present we are. Our students, sometimes are acting in ways that are distracting to other students. Our students occasionally, you know, our teachers work very hard to create, to cultivate a culture and climate that is accepting and supporting, while we're all working on different things. I think our students need a place to go and trusted adults, you know, in the school setting, and, you know, obviously, it's our job to help, help them navigate that, practice their skills, apply their strategies. Our teachers, our teachers are very good at helping students with calming strategies and perspective-taking, and that's hard to do, and, you know, you've, you've got a group of students, not, not just a small group of students, but a classroom of students, so the, the additional layers of support that I mentioned have been, have been integral to helping our teachers do that. I will say, and certainly, certainly we're seeing more anxiety, more dysregulation than ever. Paired with that, we're seeing more exuberance than ever. Our students are so happy to be in school, and that's a beautiful thing. It's hard to manage students for a group plan as opposed to, you know, many of our students are on their individual plan. I had a second grade teacher share with me, our, we're finding our students are not as delayed academically as we thought they would be from all of this academic or school interruption, but the, the opportunity to problem solve, to play, to navigate, open-ended choice. Um, but the the opportunity to problem solve, to play, to uh navigate open-ended choice instead of structured choice with your your parents or your teachers right there is our our students aren't as practiced in that. Our our young elementary students aren't as practiced in that. And it's our job to meet them where they're at and we are and we will continue to. It's not a, I I say our children are broken, our children are not damaged. But if any of us think that we are working to a goal to get back to March of 2020, we're terribly, terribly misguided. Um, there's no going back there. We need to meet our students where they're at and we need to, uh, in my mind, this gives us permission to not just stick our toe in all of the wonderful innovative teaching and learning ideas that we've been percolating and talking about. It's more urgent than ever that we look at multisensory, uh, multi-intelligence, uh, uh, open-ended project-based learning, hands-on, uh, inquiry. Uh, y- um, our our students, um, our students don't have the stamina and quite frankly, nor should they for more traditional teaching practices. So I'm not worried. I I am confident that this generation of students is going to change the world in a different way. Um, but our, I see my job is reminding our educators and continually giving ourselves permission to dig deep for those early childhood strategies, uh, teaching strategies that we all learned way back when. But we've, we've, we've adjusted ourselves, we've calibrated ourselves. And you know, many of our kindergartners historically are school-ready to learn and 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 we're being, um, our teachers are needing to dig deep with instructional strategies because that's no longer the case. There's a little friskiness, there's a little dysregulation, there's a little, um, some foundational skills that aren't as secure as we used to be able to rely on. It's not terrible, it's okay.
Thank you so much.
That was a soapbox, I apologize.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right, I just wanted to give a shout out to the, if this is on the security note, um, to the Sherburne police who, and two weeks ago, when I was at all school meeting, were there and it was really nice to have their presence there. Speaking as a parent, um, for sure. It's happy to see them. Um, okay, we'll move on to warrants and the financials. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Amanda. So for the new members, monthly when you meet, um, we present to you all the, I can call them warrants, but they're sort of batches of invoices that are sent to the town of Sherburne for payment. And you'll see that we operate in funds, so we uh provide for you the amount of each um batch and what fund it was charged to. Uh, Amanda, I believe is your signer. Uh, because we have one signer, in the past we used to have three, but legislation did change, we modernized, so that you didn't have to have three, you'd go sign. But because we have one, we present to the whole committee warrants that have been processed since your last meeting. Um, you're always welcome to come to central office and see what they look like. We do keep copies um, at our office. In addition, the originals are all at Town Hall. And um, just to get a little feel, you'll start seeing how this all connects as we uh present some of the other financial reports tonight. So never hesitate to reach out if you have questions. Uh, moving on, so every month that we do meet, you also have a set of financial statements. Um, and so uh included in your packet tonight are the statements as of June third. I usually try to capture the um, the date closest to the meeting where we've actually posted some of those warrants so that you can see them in the actual expenditures. Um, we do a running report, so for any member who um was here last month, you'll notice um, there's not that much gold, so we haven't had any much new to add. Uh, we are winding down here. We had mentioned that we were over budget in our out-of-district tuitions um, last um, in May and that we were going to wait a little bit closer before we started transferring uh that over to the Circuit Breaker Fund. In your financial statements, uh, you're looking at tonight, we have uh transferred sixty thousand dollars about a district over to your Circuit Breaker Fund, uh, leaving still a small negative variance. Um, and we will continue to monitor, um, just so you know, we do encumber funds, so we have some purchase orders that are holding funds that we may or may not use. So we'll just wait till the end of the year to see uh where we're going to be. When you see your um, June thirtieth statement, so in September, you're going to see a zero um, as what we, so there, we're, we might be a little behind, but I have money we can go to other funds, but we won't be giving money back this year. We've done a good job of spending our budget. You also have included in your packet sort of the projected um special revenue revolving fund statement as of June thirtieth. That gives you a flavor of some of the other revolving funds that are available. And the one that I was um, sort of referencing that we have used in the past for post-budget needs um, is the non-resident tuition fund. So that's typically where we draw. Those funds are available for educational expenses within the building. It is um derived, the revenue is derived from uh students that are sort of placed from other districts into Pine Hill. Right now, our only agreement is with Sher- uh Dover. So that um, over the years, we have had some Dover, um, students attend Sherburne for certain reasons and we charge Dover for that and that revenue goes into your non-resident tuition fund. You'll also see your building rental fund, cafeteria, again, the circuit breaker. I did note that the circuit breaker does reflect the use of that sixty thousand dollars. And just to bring us from budget to where we are now, if you remember at the last meeting before we approved your budget, we did use an additional sixty thousand dollars that we had as a safety net, um, and so to fund next year's budget. And then, I don't know, about a month later, the extra tuition came, so we are going to be running really tight um, on the Circuit Breaker Fund, so we, doesn't leave us a lot of cushion. But the town agreed that that was uh something they wanted to do and we have another fund that we can um draw upon if we do end up with some unprojected out-of-district tuitions uh in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, and there's some other funds that you can see. If there's any uh significant activity, then we typically note that to the side. Um, while I'm on this fund, I wanted to note, well, we've talked a lot about security. One of our um initiatives had been to bring all three campuses onto the same security FOB system. And so the region um had it installed about five years ago. We just upgraded Chicarrain, so they're on the same system. We plan to do um Sherburne, uh Pine Hill this summer. And in order to be able to take care of that on a more um, uh, emergency-type basis, we will be using money from your building rental fund to cover that upgrade. Um, and that way, for our staff, if we are going from building to building, actually, we won't have to buzz in. Our security FOB will let us in all the buildings. Um, and then it'll provide some additional um security at at Pine Hill because that system has gotten um a little more antiquated. So we're looking forward to that, but I wanted to bring that to the committee's attention. So when you see your next statement in um, in September, you'll see that we will have used some of those funds. It's a little under twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to highlight is we've talked a lot about the ESAR funding. If you're just listening out there in the world, right, everyone's talking about ESAR money, ESAR money. Um, so included in your packet tonight is sort of a summary of where we stand right now with our ESAR money, what we've spent to date and what we have to continue utilizing as needed in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. So the ESAR one was the first round of money that does need to be spent. We're uh committed by June thirtieth and then completely spent by September. We've, we will have fully committed and spent ours. And just to give you um some feeling of how we use that money, um, as Dr. Brown noticed, uh, I mentioned, we did some tier-two tutoring, so we were able to use ESAR money to put all the tutoring expenses to that um, as well as we've been doing some additional sped OT vows that weren't in the budget, so we've been using ESAR for that. We've continued our Zoom um subscription, which across the district is about thirteen thousand. Uh, so we were able to use ESAR money to cover that in all three districts. Um, we had some pool testing staff costs and we had to do one purchase of face mask. Pediatric masks were something that were a little harder to obtain, so we actually purchased our own and we used ESAR money. Um, if you look at ESAR two, um, we're, we started with eighty-five thousand, we're going to have about thirty thousand dollars left. But that's where we sort of um were able to supplement our classrooms with some additional educational assistance. Um, and so that represents about forty-three thousand. And then we used um about ten thousand for um SEL and academic assessment tools. And you'll hear more about the Panorama um data system uh in the fall, but we were able to bring that on post-budget um in fiscal year twenty-two using ESAR two. We're still sort of exploring um how that sort of uh platform works. So ESAR two will also be covering that for fiscal year twenty-three. And as we talk about budgets for fiscal year twenty-four, if it's something we want to continue with, we'll incorporate into the budget. So it's been great to have the flexibility with the ESAR money to sort of try and pilot some things um that may or may not stay with us long-term, but be to be able to have that opportunity. Um, ESAR three, when we wrote that grant, that's the last grant that we have received to date, we knew coming back into school that we needed to supplement our Chromebooks and iPads. And so both elementaries were able to purchase um a good supply of each so that we can make sure we've sort of converted ourselves to one-to-one um because of that going remote. So we needed to add some, uh, we were, we sort of cleaned out the closets when we did remote, so we had to go get some um devices that all were operable and that could work for students. So both elementaries spent um almost sixty-five thousand dollars on technology. Uh, again, which was so great to be able to do that and not have to worry about where we were going to pay for it. So we will continue, um, like you see, you have almost a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars um that we can continue to utilize for fiscal year twenty-three and ESAR three actually goes into fiscal year twenty-four. So I hope that provides you just a little bit of um info on how we've been able to really use those to um, not to use for ordinary expenses for those situations that come up that we need really because of the COVID situation. I think that was a lot of information, Bill.
Thank you.
Would I be able to ask a question? Yes, I was just going to ask if anyone had questions. For getting me up to speed, um, do the Chromebooks and iPads also cover the Metco system?
Yes, okay.
And um, do they have the ability to go wireless, as I know that some families don't have access to internet?
We have hotspots for any families that don't have internet at home.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Great. Are there any other questions for John? There's a lot of information there, and you made it very clear. Thank you. All right, so we have um, a couple of items on our agenda now to take action on. So the first is um approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three family handbook. So this is our second time through this, and I know it's your first time, Kristen, so please, if you have any questions, let us know. Um, so this is updates to the family handbook. The um updates are in the packet. And if there aren't any questions, you can go right to a vote. Okay, so I'd like to invite a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Pine Hill family handbook revisions, proposed revisions. Thank you, Dennis. And the second?
Gita Russo, second.
Thanks, Gita. Any discussion? Okay, should we do roll call? Because some of us are on Zoom.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, um, so Gita Russo?
Um, Gita Russo, here, yes.
Um, Dennis Quin?
Dennis Quin, yes.
Uh, Christine Walsh?
Christine Walsh, yes.
Kristin Everly?
Kristin Everly, yes.
I'm sorry, and Amanda Brown, yes. All right, that is all set. And then we're taking a look tonight again at the um school improvement plan for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, which ties in with the strategic objectives. And looks very exciting. Um, are there any questions or discussion about that? All right, so I'd like to invite a motion to um approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three school improvement plan.
Dennis Quin, so moved.
Thank you.
Gita Russo, second.
Thanks, Gita. Um, any discussion? Okay, um, we'll go for a vote. Gita Russo?
Gita Russo, yes.
Dennis Quin?
Dennis Quin, yes.
Thank you. Christine Walsh?
Christine Walsh, yes.
And Kristin Everly?
Kristin Everly, yes.
And Amanda Brown, yes. All right, thank you. And then we have the consent agenda, so we've got the minutes from the May tenth meeting and the approval of a donation to the Bowen Fund, um, both of which are in your packet. Are there any um, any notes or questions about those? Okay, so I'd like to invite a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis.
Gita Russo, second.
Thanks, Gita. Um, any discussion? Okay, um, so we'll go for the vote. Um, Dennis?
Dennis Quin, yes.
Gita?
Gita Russo, yes.
Thank you. Christine?
Christine Walsh, yes.
And Kristen?
Kristin Everly, yes.
And Amanda Brown, yes. Um, okay, so also in your packet, you have for your information, um, some communication. So the minutes from the Dover Sherburne Regional Committee from May third and the Dover School Committee from March sixteenth. And then the subcommittee assignments, which um, I will, we'll look at them sort of more closely um because you may have questions about them and what they are and what these people do. So um, if you know you're interested in something, let me know, but we can have conversations and review those with the community in the fall so people know who's doing what.
Amanda, just a question? Do I have Union Fifty?
So Union Fifty, we will reorganize during our joint meeting. And the Union Fifty members from Sherburne will be um, Gita, you, Dennis and myself. So it's the three longest-serving members. That's a great question. All right, if there's nothing else, I think we can vote to adjourn. And we will um be ready for our joint meeting. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thanks, Dennis.
Second.
All right, and can we all vote by unanimous consent or do we go around? Yes, we can. Okay, so all in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.